Okay. Here we go.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for checking on that, too. All right. Ellen, I want to thank you. Want to thank for the minutes from last meeting. Cheryl, thank you for doing them. And if I, if we could get a motion to approve the those minutes from October 18.
So.
Okay, so that was John moving. And if I could get a second, please? I couldn't. Oh, Carol seconded. All right, so correspondence. You got.
Going to vote on the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's been a long day. It feels like midnight. Thank you. Yes, all in favor of approving the minutes or if there's any discussion? First of all, if there's any discussion and otherwise all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Anyone opposed? Thank you. All right, motion of minutes, motions to approve the minutes passes unanimously. And all right, so the next we have as far as correspondence. One thing, actually, Gail, I may not have even mentioned to show we got a reappointment letter for.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we have the other ones for John Baldock, Ellen Grinch, Bob Buchanan, Elizabeth Summery, and Brian.
Yep. Yeah, and you'll all be happy to know that I recommended you for reappointment. And then we also had the ACLD newsletter for fall 2021. Is that the one that was attached to the minutes?
Yes.
To the agenda? Okay, so everyone has that. Um. Treasurers report. Carol, whenever you're ready.
Hey. My. Um. Nothing too unusual this month. I mean, as things are going right now. The deposit, we have the income and deposits haven't been taken to the bank, but we know what we have for income and the expenditures do match what the town has. I'm Gail is getting the accounting from the town for me for the expenditures. We break it down into more detail, but the bottom lines match. I decided to go ahead and put the income in this month and not wait until whatever month he gets around to putting them in. Because I find this very frustrating. If it's going to be a tool for deciding what we have at any, you know, typically on a November, say, um, if we put those in at a different time, it doesn't make sense. Since we know what the income was, I'm going to list it with the month that we had it as income because we actually did have it in hand. It just hadn't been put into the bank account. And we're not comparing to the bank account anymore anyway, because of the way he's putting them in and taking them out. So I don't have to make that bottom line match. We'll just go ahead and list it when it happened so that we have it for a better comparison tool. Better lined up with the month when the income happened. Does anybody have any questions? The deposit would have been 63325 and the expenditures were for 9457. And the only thing that I'm going to have to do is just make sure that each month, whenever we get to it, it does match the previous month or they add up so that our deposits are all being accounted for. So we have the income amount. It's just not showing. On the report side, now you're looking at the the spreadsheet side, but on the report side, I actually, I put them in. The 63325 is the income. It just hasn't been deposited, but at least was basically cash in hand because that stuff literally is cash.
That makes sense. That seems like a good way to do it. Does anyone have questions for Carol?
Carol, thanks for all the work you put into this.
You're welcome. Kind of the understatement of the year, but thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm trying to work it down to a simple system so that I'll be able to pass it on easily. And, you know, as we see what's happening with the deposits and so forth, just kind of figure out what makes most sense, how to follow. It's not that difficult to do. It's just a matter of knowing when to apply things.
Yeah, no, and that's part of my pitch that I forgot to ask Gail to add into the old business, but this, this, this will be coming back up in the meeting. So. But. Yeah. All right, so we'll set that subject to audit. And Carol, again, thank you. Um, Gail, your report.
My report. Okay. Hard to believe that another year has gone by and.
Okay, I apologize. Can I interrupt real quick? Ellen, for the minutes, I think it's Brian who's popping in right now at about 7:09.
Oh, thank you.
He's tried a couple of times. He keeps getting booked out. I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, and I apologize. Well, please, your report.
I'm sorry for disrupting and being late.
Completely understand.
Welcome. Um, time to start planning for the fiscal year 2023 budget. I'll maybe have it approved at the December meeting before it goes to the mayor, and I welcome your thoughts and feedback on what should be included. Um, we'll be up against the minimum wage deadline for library assistance, and we'll need to account for that. Staffing also continues to be an issue. Um, Amelia, I don't know if you've had any feeling or feedback on what the council's thinking. The mayor had said they hadn't worked on the budget directive yet.
No, that has not come out yet. I don't think it will be out till the end of December. I thought I heard Bill say they've canceled their meeting for Wednesday night, and so there wouldn't be another meeting until December.
Okay, okay.
So I don't know about the letter.
All right, so we'll kind of be doing it a little bit in the dark, not knowing what they have in mind, but. And the library news. Fall is the time for reports, and I completed two major reports. The annual report for the town and the state report for the state library. The annual report outlines the activities for the past year, and I attached a copy in the packet. I'm happy to take questions or suggestions as you've read through it. And the state report is a compilation of statistical and financial information for our library. The state compiles these statistics for all Connecticut libraries, and it serves as a way to compare our library with other libraries of similar size. On the staff news, Asia Holbrook began her work on November 1st at the Gales Ferry Library, and she's learning all that goes along with the job. I think she'll be a good addition. On the building news, Lion is working on upgrading our Wi-Fi to extend further outside the library and installing the filtering software to make us super compliant. I'd like to install access to power outside of the patio side of the library. The supplies are covered through the Opera Grant, but we cannot use those funds to pay for a contractor. I recommend that we use some of our donated funds for that purpose, and a motion is on the agenda for later in this meeting. I'm also looking to upgrade our projection equipment for better, to better accommodate hybrid meetings and programs. And I'll be developing a quote for upgraded equipment. And that's my report.
Any questions for Gail?
Nice. Nice job on the town report, Gail.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, completely agree. Thank you for compiling those reports. Always good to see. All right, so if there are no reports, we're going to jump to John for the friends. But I want to just say, Ellen, before you hop down to the meeting, we were commenting on the baskets that you put together for the the friends and the basket raffle where the silent auction was very impressive and very appreciated.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, I, in my next life, that's all I'm going to do. I'm either going to come back as my cash or and have someone take care of me, or I'm going to like have a little store. I can make baskets for people.
I'm so impressed. It sounds like my worst nightmare.
We're all good at different things.
But yeah, John, so report from the friends.
Okay, I was just going to talk about the books and more, which is that on November 20. You can go in now and place bids, and there's a huge number of baskets and other things in there. So please go in and submit your offers because this is really the only fundraiser that we have aside from the two booksellers, Gales Ferry and Bill. It's because of the pandemic, we're not going to be able to raise as much this year. So please do everything you can to support the books and more. So that's my report.
Yeah, and I'm just going to add on to that. I'm not sure if everyone's on the same timeline, timeline for renewing membership to the friends, but I know I just got something in the mail, which I very much appreciate the reminder. And if, if people aren't part of the friends, considering it this year, and maybe even with an additional gift would be, you know, it's always welcome and going to a very good, good cause, as you all know. So, John, thank you for your report, and thank you for the work you do with the friends as well. Um, investment committee. I know we have a motion, motions related to this, but was there a report as well or just jump into the motion?
I think she'll.
Yeah, we have a report.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. So the investment committee met on November 3, and we decided that the investment committee would consist of five members. So three commission members, who are Carol, John, and myself. One community member, which is Harry, and then the library director. So that is what the investment committee consists of. We had, we had several objectives in this meeting. There were four specific. So we wanted to understand what funds were actually available and in what accounts. It just seems that there were things were scattered around. To understand the use and restriction on each account, to identify an investment strategy for each account, and to discuss possible projects for the money that we have. So if we look at the accounts that we have, we have three investment accounts currently. There's the building fund, which is restricted to a building addition to Bill. And we have the William Holton Fund, which is restricted to a building addition to Bill or some other large project. And we have the Library Commission Fund, which actually has two different parts to it. One of them is donations that are made to the libraries in general. And then also a component of that is specifically for the Gales Ferry Library. So we would like to recommend, and we would like a motion to split that last account, the library commission account, into two separate funds. One for general use and one specifically for Gales Ferry. Okay, Rebecca, do you want to, should we do motions like at the end, or do you want to do them as we go?
However you would like me to do it, whatever is. If you want to do a motion now, that's.
All right.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, is there any discussion about it? Or questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So gen- but general use could also be used for Gales Ferry?
Yeah, it's a generic type of an expenditure, but the other one, part of it was specifically designated for Gales Ferry, and we think we should split that out so that they're kept separate.
Thank you.
Okay. My question is, if we're splitting to general and Gales Ferry, might there be a time when we'll have some specific to Bill?
Well, we have the two Bill building funds and then the large projects for Bill. But we don't, I don't think we have any donations currently that were specifically designated for Bill.
Probably just waiting. If that becomes an issue, we could add it, but we might end up splitting it.
Yep. Does anyone else have any questions?
Okay, so all in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed or abstaining? Okay, motion passes unanimously. And thank you for the.
Okay, okay, so there's more. And there's, and there's more. Okay, so there's.
Yay.
There's also about $13,000 in cash that is in the Dime Bank that is held on our behalf by the Bill Library Association for the library. And we, we've made our, our case, and I think this is actually what has happened, that those, our library funds are kept separate from the Bill Library Association funds. Of these monies, about $9,000 has been, had been earmarked for the building fund, but it's been held in cash in dime savings bank. So we know that interest rates are really low, and with that kind of money sitting there, we might be able to put it to better use in, by investing it better. So we would like to make a motion to move those nine, about, about $9,000 that had been earmarked to the building fund to Jenny so that we can better, make better use of it. And does anyone have any questions on that?
We'll second that motion.
Yeah, I was going to say, all right, so we have a second. So any discussion about that or questions related to that motion?
No, I think that was a good idea.
Okay, and then we also have about $4,000 that we would.
Actually, hold on, let me.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, 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 totally fine, because half the time, as you know, I forget to have a float on it. But, um, so if I could get, I already have the motion. So all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstained? Okay, that motion also passes unanimously.
Um, so that leaves us, that would, I'm sorry, so that would leave us about another $4,000 in the dimes and dime bank. And we recommend using that money to spend it down. So Gail talked about the need to have labor to extend the power to the patio, so at the library. So part, so the equipment had been covered by the grant, but the labor wasn't. So we would like to recommend allocating about $700 for labor to extend the power to the patio, and that money would come out of the, the money that's remaining at Dime Bank, because it's not really earning very much, was not earning hardly anything at all. And, and that way we can get benefit from it. It would be better if it weren't freezing outside, but but we could get used to having power on the patio at Bill. So.
If you want to make that as a motion?
Yes, yep. So I'd like to make a motion to spend about up to 7,000, oh, sorry, $700 for a contractor to install power on the patio outside Bill using the equipment that was received from the grant.
Second.
Can I get, I think, and so that was Ralph seconding. Any discussion or questions? I, I actually just have one question, and it's, I think it's a great idea. I'm just curious. So is that something the town doesn't do that we need to get an outside contractor?
Correct.
Okay.
I was hoping to get the town to dig the trench so the wire will go underground in, but they are just so up straight, they can't do it. So we're going to pay a little more to the contractor.
Makes sense to me. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor of this motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining or opposed? Okay, that also passes unanimously because we're a very agreeable group. Thank you guys. Thank you for your work on this. And if there's more, please continue.
Yeah, if there's just one thing, we're planning to meet once a month, and we'll continue doing that. So that was, that's my report.
Can, can I add a little bit to that, Cheryl?
Please.
Last week, I met with Sal, and he drafted a policy that I'm going to have the investment committee look at and bring back to the commission at the next meeting. But one of the things we talked about was setting up an ACH account. Sal thought there might be one already, but he says he's going to check. If there is not, he strongly recommends that we do it because it would allow funds to be transferred back and forth between Dime Bank and Jenny without having to go through Bill as a check. So I wonder if you'd like to make a motion to establish the ACH account if there is not one already there.
Sure, can I, can I get a motion to that?
So.
Okay, so John made the motion, and Carol, I think, seconded it. Do I see that right? Any discussion or questions?
Can you read back the motion, please?
Um, a motion to set up an ACH account between Jenny and Dime Bank.
Thanks. I don't know how I lost that part. Heard you met with Sal, and you wanted to set up an ACH, and then I sort of didn't hear anything. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Please say aye.
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 Thank you. Anyone opposed or abstained?
It could already, can I say something? Could already be here. If it's a checking account at Dime, you know, Dime has online banking, and you can transfer funds in and out of an account, either between accounts of Dime or from outside, and you can pay bills directly as well. So it may already be there.
That's what the ACH account will do if it's not already.
Right.
I would just recommend checking because sometimes there's a charge for an ACH account, but to John's point, there isn't, or ACH transfer, to John's point, there isn't for direct transfer between the banks. I don't know if that applies to commercial accounts as well, but that might be something to think about.
We can check the shell and add, or with Dime, either way. I lost the screen share. Do you still have it?
Yes.
Lost, you lost what?
The, the screen share.
You have the agenda page.
Yeah, do you still have it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. My, my screen.
All right, so that, we, we had had the vote on that already, right? So that has, that has passed, and I, I just want to again, thank the investment committee. I know, you know, some of you, like, were a little bit maybe even hesitant to, to join this, and I'm really grateful that you did. And, and, you know, just it's turning into more work than I think we thought, but I think it's so unbelievably important. And I want to thank you, and I don't know if everyone's monitoring the little video windows, but Ralph gave you a round of applause, and I think it was very, very warranted. So again, thank, thank you, everyone. Then moving on to old business, actually, another time when, you know, people got strong-armed into doing something that they didn't really want. If I remember this correctly, when Carol stepped up to be treasurer, it wasn't exactly something that she really wanted. If I recall correctly, we were, everyone was either in some sort of leadership role already, or we had new members. So she basically was, I think, the only person who could step into the role, so she did. And, and I, you know, she's done a fabulous job, but she really does need to step down. And I know I put out my little pleading appeal, asking for someone to step forward. And, and I heard back from a couple of people of reasons they couldn't, and absolutely 100% valid reasons. But if you haven't responded, and you're not necessarily doing some sort of leadership role, even if it's something you're not really, really wanting to do, it would be really helpful if someone could step up to take on this position. I'm not going to put anyone on the spot tonight unless you want to step forward, and I would be really, really grateful. But, um, I, I, you know, I, we're, we're running out of time because Carol's agreed to do it through the end of the year. But, you know, come January, we really do need to have someone else in that position. I'll let the awkward silence hang here for a minute, but please feel free to, you know, me, Gail, Carol, anyone. There was something in the chat that I have not checked my email. Does this maybe mean that I might have a volunteer or some questions? Sorry. Um, I cannot get my email at the moment, but I'm going to check my email after the meeting, and you might have someone maybe in this class. But, um, all right, so that's, that's my appeal. I will circle back with everyone. And again, thank you. And on to new business on Gail. FY23 budget.
I'm looking for your feedback, suggestions, ideas on how to approach the budget.
I think we have to add the 20-hour supervisor back into the budget. I mean, they didn't fund it last year. Let's, let's keep at it and maybe involve the new money that the town has from the COVID grants, then maybe we can get it restored.
Last, last year, what I did was we actually didn't put the 20-hour person in, hoping to get more part-time hours, which is almost more important to me right now than, than a 20-hour position.
Well, let's put them both in then.
Do you already have something to send to us to look at?
Not yet. I'm just trying to work on it. You'll, you'll get it before the next meeting.
Okay, I'm like flipping through papers. I'm like, ah, I must have missed.
Yeah. I haven't done it yet.
Okay.
So so, I mean, this is kind of a, a different tack, but it seems to me, Gail, that whenever you put in exactly what you want, it gets cut back. So is it, is it a thought to put in a lot more than what you want and then let it get cut back to what you want?
I think we've tried both, and neither has worked. Um, I'm, I'm hoping there's not so much doom and gloom with all the extra money that's, you know, out there. They might look a little more favorably on a request. You know, I, I honestly hate being closed on Thursday. There's three of us working in the building and without a part-time person to be on the desk. And, and because the mayor wanted us to be closed, we're not, we're not open. And I can't tell you how many people come to the door during the day wanting to come in. So, I mean, I would really like to see us open at least in the morning on Thursday.
Yeah, I was going to ask, and, and I agree. I think it sends the wrong message that there are people in the building, but the building is locked. And, and I understand why that's the case, but I, I also think it's, you know, it's an uncomfortable thing for everyone involved. But how many hours would you need to open, you know, like, what would you ideally want either for, you know, to open, because what is a Gales Ferry on? open, you know, like what would you ideally want either for, you know, to open, because what is a Gail's Ferry on Friday as well as go on Thursday? What would be the ideal number of hours?
If, if we open Gail's Ferry, I would need two people over there. If we did Friday morning, that's four hours. If we did all day, that's eight hours. If we did at, at Bill, because of the rest of us in the building, I could do it with one person on the desk. But either four hours in the morning or eight hours all day.
Is it worth, is it worth putting a petition up on the door? Especially on Thursdays when people can't get in and ask people to sign the petition saying if they would like to see it open? So it's not just coming from you, Gail?
I seem to get in trouble when I do that. Um, you know.
I mean, you're basically looking for, was it like four hundred and sixteen hours, right, for, to open up Bill?
Right.
Like eight hours times fifty-two weeks, is that roughly?
Yeah, eight hours. You're thinking eight hours.
Yeah, I mean, why, I mean, if, if you added budget lines of yeah, however you set it up, but showing that like, okay, with this, you know, four hours a week, I put it in at eight hours a week, we could open Gail's Ferry, we could open Bill on those days, put it in as line items. I mean, I think it, it makes sense because there's not, there's no tangible reason to have them closed one day. It was just sort of to make something work, some random.
Yeah, the way, the way I do it in the, in the budget is I'll have a spreadsheet. And I can, like I think last year I was asking for sixteen additional hours at X amount of money and this is what it would cost. And that was over and above what they have to pay for library assistance. So, yeah, I can do, do that. I can put in different, different options for you to see and then we can decide how we want to present it.
Well, because the sixteen hours was to have eight hours at both libraries.
Well, the sixteen hours is we have so many shifts at Bill with just one person on the desk in the morning. Granted, the rest of us are in the back, but what happens is Lisa can't get her work done because she's on the desk.
Yeah.
It would be a, you know, someone to work in conjunction with her, but still allow her to get her work done.
And you need two people for Gail's Ferry.
We always need to be over there. And Stacy, children's librarian, has really split her time between both libraries. So she's over there two and a half days a week as well. So she ends up being Tuesday morning, she's the second person. But other than that, she's the third person over there.
Well, I mean, maybe we put in for an extra twenty hours, which I mean, so if it was eight hours, two at Gail's Ferry and one at Bill, that would be you know, twenty-four, but maybe we put in like twenty hours and, and it just allows you the flexibility to decide whether it's covering missing shifts or opening up eight hours, six hours, four hours, whatever it is, but something to sort of meet what the community is really looking for. And if we need you don't have to segment it out of which library it's for, you know, we can figure that, see what we can get for hours and then make it work, whatever's best for the library.
Right, right. And um, getting to your idea of the petition, I don't think I can do that. But that's not to say you couldn't do that.
Cool, okay.
You know, talk to your friends and neighbors.
Does it? All right, this is a foolish question, but is it better to play nice to begin with and see how it, it all plays out? And, and then respond versus stirring the pot before it needs to be stirred? I don't know, devil's advocate. Maybe it'll help once we get a better sense of what they're willing to entertain for our budgets.
What about restoring the book budget?
I, I would like to increase the book budget because our line costs are gonna be going up next year. And in my initial looking at the budget, I, I'm gonna be putting in an increase there in line as well as the book budget because our share of digital resources that we get through Lion, because they've been used so much, our cost is gonna go up. So that on top of inflation and the fact that the book budget hasn't increased in X number of years, I think we need to ask for an increase to the book budget.
Are there also items that because the Friends has not, have not been able to do as many fundraisers, that they're not able to fund and you would need to put in your budget to offset that?
Well, that, that was definitely an issue with the Friends this year because they didn't have as much to provide for electronic resources.
Yeah, just so I can, I can tell you that the Friends budget for this coming year is about seventeen thousand, seventeen three twenty-three, which is like seven or eight thousand less than what they've normally given in the, in the past. So that's obvious because of the pandemic.
Do you think that's something we could have, like a line that, like, is there an item that you can sort of quantify that's around that amount? You know, whether it's electronic resources or museum passes or, you know, something that you could put in the budget that couldn't, maybe hopefully just be a temporary one-year thing, but to, you know, to fill that gap.
Well, well, a couple of things, um, Hoopla that the Friends typically will fund. I've had to supplement from our budget because they couldn't cover the full cost. And we actually took that two thousand dollar request and put that towards what the Friends are funding for Hoopla.
What is that?
Sixty-six hundred dollars for Hoopla.
It's what they're paying, but it's actually more than that.
Right, I know, but that's what the Friends are.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought we approved money for that last meeting.
We did.
We did.
We gave, we gave two thousand towards, so they could, so they could fund the sixty-six hundred.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's supposed to approximately eight thousand dollars, which it sounds like it is, and the Friends fundraised about eight thousand less. Maybe that's what the line item is.
Well, the other thing is they, they cut back on, on program money. They, they couldn't, well, we eliminated the Friends program money from the budget. Also, they typically will purchase equipment that we need, like printers or um, what have they gotten for us? They've got enough scanners.
The LCD projector they've, they've purchased in the past.
Yes. So I couldn't put any of that in their budget this year either.
Right. We could have put it in, but unless we cut something else like Hoopla or whatever, I mean, there's there's a long list of things that the Friends have funded. If you want me to go through that, I'd be happy to go through it.
I'm just thinking like finding something that we're putting in the, the library's budget, you know, explaining it's sort of a, you know, a temporary offset of you know, where the Friends couldn't, and it actually raises the people's understanding of how much the Friends do. And it, you know, that they weren't able to do it this year, but it's, it's a temporary thing and it, it raises awareness and also potentially puts some of those funds in, you know, allows the library still to have some of those funds. Or Cheryl said to me, or I think it was Cheryl, maybe it was Cheryl, to have something that could be cut as well.
Well, Hoopla is a good example because it's so expensive and people love it. That's why it's so expensive. It's daily use. The same thing with our overdrive digital resources that we get through Lion. The usage of those have definitely gone up. And we pay according to usage.
Is the overdrive part of the Lion fee?
Yes, yes. We pay Lion for our share of overdrive.
Yeah.
And I think it's, um, I was looking at it today. It's a little over four thousand for next year, for our share. And that's, that's the downloadable audios, ebooks and magazines that we provide through Lion.
I use it a lot. To answer your question, Rebecca, for books, the Friends actually with the sixty-six hundred for Hoopla, there's another roughly five thousand that's spent on Tumble Books, Ancestry, the Mango Language Database and the Creative Bug. And then there's some money in there for cost increases. So total on books, so to speak, is eleven, over eleven thousand dollars. That was, that the Friends are spending out of the seventeen thousand that they're approved for the following year. So most of it's for books.
Yeah.
But, but that's already allocated, so I don't know that you could take any, it wouldn't do any good to take anything out of the Friends budget because they've already committed.
Yeah, and I guess maybe I'm, I'm miswording that because I hadn't realized that you'd already figured out where all that stuff is going.
It's already approved, yeah.
Okay, for, for FY twenty-three.
Well, the years don't exactly jive, but basically, yes.
Okay. Yeah, all right. I mean, I guess I'm just saying, maybe it's just a
The Friends go from October to October. So, not true, it's not July to June. So it's a little offset here.
Yeah. I guess I'm just sort of thinking, maybe it's just a line in the budget of, you know, things that weren't able to be funded by Friends, you know, something to explain, you know, because we do, there is a lot that we couldn't do. So maybe it's programming, you know, however, whatever wasn't funded.
Well, normally we would have asked, they would have asked the Friends for the LCD projector in the, in the classroom because that's no good anymore. It needs to be replaced. They don't have the money to do it this year, so that's why you're gonna get a request from the investment committee, I think, to purchase the, a new LCD projector and other equipment so we can do virtual meetings effectively. It don't work, as you know, if you try to do a hybrid meeting.
Does that help you, Gail? I mean, like, like all of this part?
You've given me some ideas and I'll work with that and put something together and then we can come back and talk about it next month. And just a reminder that we meet on the second Monday in December. So the meeting is a week earlier, on the thirteenth.
Um, can I add one other thing? I want to sort of make it new business, although it's related to the old business. I was actually able to pop into my email while we were talking and I, I found a wonderful message from, from Ralph basically saying that he had agreed to step up and take on the treasurer's role, which I am unbelievably grateful and I know we will be extremely capable hands with him as treasurer. I mean, I know we're gonna need, you know, a motion and, and all that stuff, but do we, do we do that tonight or is that for our next agenda? How does that work?
Um, January is typically where we do elections. So, yeah, yeah.
To do it. So that would work for me. It works for him.
Awesome. And, and thank you because, like, my messages and my pleading were gonna get really pathetically groveling and no one around about. So but, so I really, I am, I'm very grateful and I apologize. For some reason, I just didn't see the message earlier. I think it probably, I, I left work and crossed paths. So, so thank you. Okay. All right. So with that wonderfully happy news, unless someone has anything else, if I could, well, reminder, as Gail said, the next meeting is December thirteenth. If I could get a motion to adjourn the meeting.
No move.
All right, Carol moved and if I could get a second?
Second.
And Beth's second. Thank you, guys. So with that, you know, do we have to vote? All in favor, please say aye.
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 No one's gonna oppose that one. So with that, the meeting is adjourned and thank you all very much for being here and for the work that you do on behalf of the library and the commission and, and all that.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you.
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, yeah, you guys as well. Take care, safe travels.
Bye, everybody. Have a good holiday.
Um, thank you so much.
Bye.